Welcome. Good evening. It is Monday, August 19th, 2024. We are here for the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. First thing we need to do is call the meeting to order. It is 6:31 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to consider and adopt the agenda. It is before you in the packets and also on board book.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Next up, we have consideration for requests to speak on the agenda. And we do have a request tonight. This is a rarity. This is a rarity. We have Siri Erickson with us this evening, so Siri, you can come on up to the table. So typically how this would work, you have a couple of minutes to share the items you have for comment and we will listen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, first, I want to just start by thanking you all for your service, both board and staff. We have two kids in the district and it's been an incredibly positive experience. And I know it's been a time of making some hard decisions about budget and other things. So you probably all have some fatigue around making tough decisions. And I've come tonight just to speak briefly, I won't be long, about the changes in the student pass for events. So just a couple of remarks that I wanted to share. And my concerns, I guess, go in two buckets. One is for all of our students and families and how it might impact. And then the other one is specifically for some specific groups in our community. So just want to share those concerns. For all students, when I read the email, I just kind of, my heart just kind of sunk like, oh, this feels like a step backwards on attempts to create community cohesion, community spirit, making a place where all of our kids can attend events and cheer on older kids in our district and have those kind of role models that they can look up to. And so my concern is that will this policy depress attendance and participation at our events broadly speaking? And I don't know if we have numbers that we've tracked in the past to know how a policy like this might impact that. That seems kind of like a loss just for Saints Nation, community spirit. And then secondly, there's not a lot of other things for kids to do in our town sometimes on evenings. And these events are like one of the few places where people of any background can come together, all ages, races, whether they have kids in the school or not. And so it feels like a loss if attendance were to be depressed and we'd have fewer people feeling like they can participate in these community events. So that's one. And just like a personal story, my son is going to be a fourth grader at North. And all of last year, he and his basketball team attended the boys' basketball games together. And so there's the big community impact, but also like these little micro communities of kids that self-organize to go to events together. And if some of them can't afford now to pay, how is that going to impact those kind of friend and smaller group dynamics? So that's one. I would say my bigger concern, though, is for how this policy will impact disproportionately potentially kids who are low income or kids who are students of color, who are also low income, or are immigrant families and those kids, some of whom, you know, have a lot more kids in their families. And so having to pay to go to events is going to be a bigger lift. And so I know that as a district, you all have been working really hard on that commitment to make it a place where everyone belongs and we can be proud of having a school where, no matter your income, your race, your immigrant status, that you belong here in St. Peter. And so I just have a question about, you know, will this policy disproportionately affect a group of kiddos that we're trying so hard to include? So then my request would be, you know, is there a plan for people who can't afford to pay? And if that plan could be communicated to all families, I think that would help just everybody kind of know what's going on and what the opportunities are. Maybe their family doesn't need it, but they care about other families. So just there could be more clear communication about what those opportunities are for those kids and families. And then tracking attendance and just kind of making that data known to community members about whether or not this policy has shown a decrease in participation across our community. So that's what I wanted to share. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, if it's okay, I'll comment. Having had several discussions with Shay, our activities director, about it. Yeah, right. I think Siri, you hit on it, right? We've had to make a lot of really difficult budget decisions.
Yeah.
In thinking about both big and small. We have a lot of big questions out there and we also have some smaller ones about being able to sustain some of the programs, including co-curriculars that we have, and how do we make sure that we can afford to pay officials, to pay coaches, to buy uniforms and all those kind of things? And so how do we, how do we keep these programs going that we know are valuable? So communication did go out last week. We had good conversations. Part of the original intent was to make it very clear that there are opportunities for those who, the $50 activity fee would be a burden. And so another message went out today, or at least was posted on the website and social media. I'm not sure if it went out in an email. But that gives the opportunity to reach out to the activities office to receive assistance, essentially covering. We have scholarships, of course, that help cover activity fees and those so that we can make sure we have equitable access. And that was really important with this too, because you're right, we don't want kids to not go to basketball and football games because of this. So we do have those support things in place. So the feedback is noted about maybe finding even better ways to communicate that, particularly with audiences that might need to hear that. So I think that's a really good point.
Yeah.
And I'll certainly share that, or will share that with those who can communicate about that.
Yeah.
Anyone have other things to add about that? Yeah, we appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
The hard and good work that you all do. Very grateful. So take care.
Thanks.
Have a good rest here, Mary.
Any other requests to speak? The next up is the approval of consent agenda items. Consent agenda can be found in your packet and in the board book online. Would entertain questions or a motion?
I move approval of consent agenda.
I'll second. I just, oh, I was just going to comment and just comment or point out the resignation of Brian Adlin and just thank him. I know that he was our football coach and dean of students for, I don't know what it is, say 15 years? A long time. And wish him best in his new adventure, but appreciate the time and he spent with the district and all the things he done, so.
So since you brought up Brian Adlin, that should be a retirement and not a resignation.
I'm so sorry.
No, it said that it said.
I know it did. And I saw that.
Yeah.
And I was confused about that. But you're right, it is a retirement, a retirement from us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. Other comments, things to pull out, to address? If not, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Do not believe we have a student spotlight nor a student council report tonight, correct?
Correct.
But in September, I hopefully will have both. Fingers crossed that we have both. All right, we'll move on to action items. The first action item up is number one, consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. You can find the information on page 59 of the packet.
So I think we live, we talked this morning at our opening workshop about how fortunate we are to live in such a supportive community. And this continues to demonstrate that. There are four gifts and donations to note. The Gouverneur's Performing Arts Association provides instructors with a $750 donation to help defray some of the participation fees for private percussion lessons. The Good Neighbor Diversity Council has presented the high school with a donation of $2,000 to help cover the cost of our Hispanic Joy Day, which will be held on October 11th, 2024. And then Ken and Patsy Rosso have provided two donations to the St. Peter Public Schools. A donation for the purchase of a Grace Street feedback sign and a donation to the Partners for Success. The first $2,921.50, to be precise, and the second $1,000, and that's for the Partners for Success program. We're very grateful for all of those donations and want to thank the folks involved. And I would recommend accepting these gifts and donations as presented.
I'm going to accept these gifts and donations. Thank you, Dan.
I'll second with another thank you to everyone.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Just echoing the gratefulness for the generosity. Thank you, Board Member Rosso.
Awesome.
Can you, so the street sign on Grace is about speed?
Exactly.
To help control speed?
If I may?
Yeah, please, please.
When I was knocking on some doors during the preseason last summer, there was a woman on Capitol that had several younger children, really concerned about crossing Grace Street. And as you know, there's not a sidewalk that goes on the south side of Grace. There is on the north side, but you have to cross Grace. And I don't have statistics to support this, but my suspicion is Grace is probably the third busiest street in town after 169 or Minnesota Avenue and probably Broadway. But again, statistically, I can't support that, but I know there's a lot of traffic on it. There's also a fair amount of traffic in and out as people go drop folks off at the middle school, freeway, and then the activities field, parking up there and so on. And it, to me, was a concern. And I thought it was a very legitimate point that was made. Talked to the city and was looking originally at some opportunities while working with them. The city was very cooperative. They have limitations, of course. So it came down to, we were willing to pay part of it and the school district paid the other half, hence the 50 cents. I did scrape the bottom of the checkbook. It wasn't quite that bad. But anyway, it's sort of, what it boils down to, I guess, is putting a little bit of money into something I believe is a significant safety factor.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the gifts and donations have been accepted.
Mr. Chair, please note that I abstain.
Yes, thank you. Yep. All right. Next up is approval of policy manual review. You can find these policies on page 64. The first policy, Policy 620, is just the second reading. We had read it the first time at the last board meeting and included that. That was the credits. Credit for learning, there had been an omission. The number of credits was missing. Might have just said X, I think, and now it's been corrected to three credits from the school district. And then we have several policies that just need approval off of one reading because of not having substantial changes. And you'll see those listed here generally related to superintendent. So very timely. Clean those up before the new guy comes in. And then the 400s, which are equal employment opportunity, some of our disability nondiscrimination, some of our general policies about employment. And then also the Policy 714 fund balances. We had, there had been an omission. The online version was missing the last section, so we corrected that oversight and then brought this back for one reading to review that.
And I've had no feedback, so I recommend that Jay accept these changes.
Second. So we have a motion and a second?
And I need that.
No, you're good.
All right.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion.
So in that 714 fund balance, does it say in there then that it will be brought? Is the fund balance recommendation reviewed every year then? Like, does every year, do we look at that and say, yep, this is what we want our fund balance to be?
That's typically been the practice in my past, which will come back in December for discussion and action to set a fund balance reserve goal for the following fiscal year.
So if we wanted that to be our action, is that stated in this policy? Or is that just something that we just have to like have as our, kind of more of our procedure versus a policy? Do you see what I'm saying?
It says in the policy that it will be reviewed.
Reviewed annually.
Yeah. That line had just been, had been omitted when we put it in back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, so the policy itself doesn't, our goal isn't stated in the policy, right? The policy indicates that we have a, that we strive to that 16%, which is 60 days. But that doesn't lock us in as setting that as our, right? So we don't need to change the policy every time to reflect what we decide during the budgeting process as our target number. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we always are like every year looking at that and saying, yep.
That language is in there.
Yeah.
And I'm confident we will be doing that.
Okay.
As we move forward.
And I think we have.
Yes, for sure.
It's just a continuation of the policy.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Just a bit of a follow-up from what we talked about at the previous board meeting and probably the one prior to that pertaining to the fund balance and the budget. We, business committee meets monthly at least, and the intent is to be fully forthright and highly transparent to the board and the community relative to no surprises. And the first more thorough report relative to that will be in September. And the reason for that is because of the year end, the fiscal year end of June 30, to get finalized things and give business office opportunity to put that together. So that would perhaps be a good indicator of what the fund balance is depending on how the budget is performing on a regular basis and at least on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, which would be good.
Cool.
Exactly.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Policies are approved as written in the packet. Next up, consider adoption of handbooks for 2024, 2025.
So this action, as typical, requires a motion. The background is that the principals have submitted proposed changes to the handbook, to their handbooks, the student handbook, student parent handbooks in some cases. Those changes were all reviewed by the Education Committee at their meeting. And the Education Committee recommended the acceptance of those changes to the board. But we are asking our principals to come up and review those individually and to see what kind of questions you might have before seeking that adoption. So we're going to do it in waves.
Wave one.
Wave one. All right. So I have two memos tonight, one for South Elementary and one for the Ashwa Learning Academy. So we'll start with South Elementary. Our review really didn't result in significant changes, but our BLT groups talked about the handbook in June and again in August. And so it was, it was really just a few language things. So the first thing was in our academic section, we have different conference nights identified. And our middle conference in November said, students are asked not to attend this conference. And it was something that teachers didn't even really realize was in there, but felt it was probably in there because sometimes teachers and parents do need to have a conversation. So we just changed the language to parents can use discretion. Section two is attendance. We added language directly from board policy about what was excused. There have been many questions about that at the elementary level, so we just added the policy right into our handbook. And then we just also updated our communication practices. So in the past, it was not until six unexcused absences that we notified parents of a potential truancy or education neglect situation, which can be reported at seven. So that didn't seem like a lot of time to have communication and problem solving. So we changed our policy to four. We may reflect the practice of North, which is three, but our policy is four. Guidelines and procedures, we just updated some language about visiting school. Lots of times, parents like to come visit school for lunch and we just want to tighten up our practice about having parents go directly to the cafeteria and back, not stopping to visit with other teachers and their kids' friends along the way. So just kind of cleaning that up a bit. We talked about rephrasing language about party invitations at school. Sometimes kids' feelings are hurt. Sometimes teachers feel like they're in the middle, so just cleaning that up a bit. We deleted that South students will receive free admission to high school activity events for reasons already discussed. We also updated language to reflect the free breakfast and lunch for students. And our policy section was updated to reflect school board policies that have changed. Ashwa had very few. Really, the only things we changed were in the academic section. We just needed to update our graduation requirements to reflect the new policies that were passed last year. Also, we had a section called commencement. And we actually talked about having a formal commencement ceremony available. And so we actually pulled that out because some of our students were really uncomfortable with that. Some of our teachers were uncomfortable. There's a whole issue of confidentiality. So we talked about having a diploma and a celebration, but not necessarily a formal commencement. So just kind of reframed the language there. And then again, just updating the policies to reflect the school board changes, so.
Very good.
At North, we had about nine minor adjustments or clarifiers that we did with the handbook. Some of them are aligned pretty well with what Janet was just talking about. One was just identification of weather information. We have an onsite weather station, so when we do inclement weather for inside recess, that we're going to use that weather station rather than like the Weather Channel or the information that's out at the Mankato Airport. So it'll be local determination. Clarification on report card distribution. We actually do mail them out every quarter, like a paper copy to everybody, as well as access to Infinity Campus all the time. But clarification on that one. Attendance reporting, parents and guardians can now report absences via email. It used to be just calling, and so now they can actually use our attendance clerk and email as well. And then we're just trying to clarify discouraging families to like not to use CSO or any kind of text messaging and stuff like that, go through the proper protocol. Attendance taking clarifies how partial day absences are recorded. If students arrive after 9:00 AM or leave prior to three, an hour, excuse me, an hour, if they arrive after an hour, after the school day starts or leave an hour before the school day ends, those are half-day absences. So it's clarifying that. Snacks, this is a big one. It's unfortunate we've offered, we've been able to offer snack cart program, a healthy snack cart program for many years. That's not obtainable anymore, just the cost of it, and we were kind of going backwards. So it's not sustainable, unfortunately. So I've been sending messages out to families this summer just to make them aware. So then we had to put language back in the handbook about, you know, you can send snack. There will be a snack break at various times during the day and then you can, you know, what kind of snacks to send, please. So it's clarifier on that. Unexcused absences, this is one where we have extended period. We're defining in the handbook by three or more days of known absences coming up. Let's say it's a family trip or something. Please work with the teacher to clarify what schoolwork can be done to keep the learning progression going forward. And so that also says that I could deem those as unexcused absences if that continues to be like an over, a number of absences that would cause an interruption in educational sequence. Okay? And that's also like Janet was talking about, we don't just spring that on families. I mean, we are working with families. We're getting letters out prior to the point where they're getting in a situation where the students are gone many days. Clarification on unpaid meal charges, obviously. I know there is not a charge with that. Athletic events, just as far as like, you know, parents are in charge of the kids when North students attend and we encourage them to attend the all events, but if they're not able to follow the expectations that we have at North and apply that to those areas, like we can ask you to go stay with your parent on the stands or in the bleachers or maybe even leave the event. And then also removal of free student passes. And then any policy that was updated, our practice is updated to reflect that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wave number two.
All right. SPMS also has a number of changes to the handbook. Just to kind of preface all of the changes, so SPMS is in a really cool spot. You know, we've only been in existence for about eight years and a few of those years were COVID. And then we've also had some significant schedule changes. So we finally feel like we're in a spot where the motor's running and now we can focus on just fine tuning things. So these changes reflect us fine tuning, clarifying expectations for students and staff. So to give a quick overview of the changes. So first section, academics, we've added some language to reflect our 80/20 grading policy. 80% of the students' grade comes from summative assessments, 20% falls on formative. We've clarified our retake process. Retakes are allowed by all teachers, but we have put a time limit on how long after the summative assessment you can retake a test, and that is two weeks. Also, prior to retaking an assessment, you need to turn in all of your practice work. We find that it doesn't make a lot of sense to retake a test if you haven't done any practice work. So we're clarifying that. Next one is late work. Late work can be turned in after the due date without loss of points. But once again, it comes back to a two-week timeframe after that summative assessment. We found that it's unmanageable for students and staff to constantly have this revolving door of work coming in. So we're putting some timelines on it to allow for a smoother operation. The next change is in our attendance section. We've just changed in there our start and end times to reflect our 3:10 end time, our dismissal. Next section is in section four, guidelines and procedures. We've clarified our backpack usage. Students will still be able to carry backpacks throughout the day. We find that that's very beneficial in terms of organization for students. But we have clarified one backpack. A lot of our students carry, a lot of our students carry additional items such as soccer balls or two bags, you know, for sports. So we will, yeah, they look like a ninja turtle. We'll require them to put their second backpack in their locker or the gym locker or we have a space for golf bags and things like that. The next section is food in classrooms. We're clarifying what snack time looks like. Essentially, we're saying students are certainly welcome to bring snacks, but we want them to eat those snacks during passing time. Section two, B2 there, 3B2, I want to highlight this. This has changed since the Education Committee meeting. Originally, our leadership team had toyed with the idea of banning all liquids besides water after 8:25. After further review, we don't feel that that is necessary and/or healthy. So what we've put in the handbook is water bottles with secure lids are allowed and encouraged in the classroom. Really, the beef was spilling, not so much what was in the water bottle. So if a student is drinking a Gatorade throughout the day because that's dietarily what they need, awesome. We'd just like it to be in a secure vessel. snack, but we want you leaving your tacos in the cafeteria. And then the last section, technology, clarifying our district usage are the Chromebooks, the district issued Chromebooks, rather. Just making a statement that those Chromebooks are really for educational purposes, and clarifying that games, videos, things of that nature that are not approved specifically by teachers will not be allowed throughout the day. And honestly, that is good for our students to know and also good for our staff to know. So once again, just clarifying expectations for a smooth operation. Any questions?
I just want to say that I really appreciate that, once you make a decision that, you know, what, with the liquids that you like, we analyze it, you know what, that makes sense, and we changed our mind, like, you don't just, you don't just, you know, dig in your heels and be like, no, that's just what we decided. Like, obviously, somebody came to you and argued for apple juice and Gatorade, and you know what I mean? Like, I just want to...
Our goal is to be as, as least restrictive as possible.
Yes.
And we wouldn't put things in the handbook if questions didn't come up.
Yeah.
Just a, a good, good way to clarify.
We need to be flexible, is what I'm saying. I really like flexibility in your thinking.
We do too. We do too.
When I was the middle school assistant principal, speaking of the little carrot packs, there was one rather interesting young fellow who was filling up one of those basement floor lockers with carrots. I guess his goal was a certain number a day until it was a... I do miss, I do miss the middle school. I do miss middle schoolers a lot. They are creative. They are creative.
I hope I can give any middle school gives an idea.
It's, it's better than like milk cartons or something, so...
Keep throwing on any...
Right. I'm going to keep throwing.
Milk cartons, not allowed.
Not allowed. Not allowed. Most of the new language in the high school handbook, and you know, gets down to either like 14 days versus three weeks, or 10 minutes versus 15 minutes, those are pretty clear. You know, with the block schedule, I don't think in years we had changed that three-week former language, three weeks for a incomplete, which is a really long time under a block schedule. So that's, that's been reduced to 14 days. All of those changes to the academic integrity policy have really been, it's been our practice, but we just hadn't really reviewed it in the handbook so much. You know, we do want to leave, leave some of those decisions up to the classroom teacher while they're working with parents and families, instead of having such a narrow description in the handbook. So hopefully, that will help out our teachers and our kids. Our tardiness policy, we had a tardiness policy that, you know, go figure, kids would, would go right up until that 15, like, they'd walk in at 14 minutes and 55 seconds, so they wouldn't get an unexcused absence instead of, which is a really long time in a, in a class period. So we reduced that to 10 minutes late to class, will be marked absent, not tardy. One, one kind of big change is that we're no longer charging for parking passes. We found that not all kids got parking passes anyway, and the whole point of the parking pass is that we need to know who's in our, who's in our school lot. And so there's no excuse not to have a school, a school parking pass now. If they don't have one within the first two weeks of school, then they'll have to pay for their parking pass or have a fine. But for safety and security reasons, that's gotten to be a bigger issue with kids not having, having a parking pass. And the other kind of biggie is junior/senior prep. We just felt with this, the grade distribution here is a little bit more equitable for those kids who are working hard and doing their best and behaving themselves, doing everything right, and they're a C student. So we're lowering that grade from a B minus to call it B minus or higher for all grades to qualify for junior/senior prep to a C or higher. Any questions on those?
I do have one if, if I may.
Yep.
First of all, I applaud that change in terms of the academic rating. I think it could be a C student working very, very diligently, and that's, that's to be given a reward. Secondly, at what level, and I should know this, but I don't, is a student truant?
A student is considered truant at only three absence, three unexcused absences throughout the course of a day. It can be, they can be, they can miss three different class periods. However, at habitually truant, it can, it takes seven.
Okay.
And again, I have to bring, one of these times, I'm going to bring our unexcused app, our attendance reports, because we are, we've done such a great job with our system and with our work with the county, that there are unexcused absences are significantly lower than they were four years ago.
Sure. What is somewhat curious about is if a student is 11 minutes late, they're absent, and that, does that trigger future consequences?
That would trigger, if it's a tardy, it would likely trigger an unexcused absence.
Okay. Even though they could be there to take a test.
Well, their parent can for a while excuse it if they would so choose to. But hopefully, they'll get to class.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm just going to be vulnerable and put myself out there.
Yeah.
Because the attendance clerk is doing a little more following up with what is an excused absence. We are just running a little bit late today isn't really an excused absence.
Right.
And that's okay, because sometimes we just need to move a little faster. And that's okay, Tracy Stewie. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I told your husband this morning.
You know what, and it's a different message. It's a different message than what we've had in the past as parents, really.
Right.
And so, it drives people the wrong way. I'm just going to put myself out there and say I've been there myself, so we all need to do better. But what were you saying about three absences in the same day and being truant? That part confused me.
If, if, they have to be different days. Sorry, thank you, John. So three, three unexcused absences in any class period on three different days.
Oh, I got you. That makes sense.
But we also have a, our student support team meets very regularly about students and their attendance, and our attendance clerk is part of that team. So she's also tracking, like, ah, I think this might be one, or the social worker or the school nurse knows something that's going on with, with the kid. So we are relatively flexible there.
This isn't school district policy.
No.
This is the law.
Yep.
Yeah. And I think, though, that change with like, with the parents really could, like, I could just say, you know what, we're just, I excuse you. I mean, please excuse my kid for being late today, and that was it. But that's not how it is anymore.
No.
And I think that message, though, does need to get out, because what I'm hearing from people is, I can do what, I'm the parent, I can do whatever I want. Well, I'm telling you, I, Tracy Stewie, can't do whatever I want either, and I'm on the score. So I'm just telling you, it's unexcused.
Yeah, legally, your kid has to be in.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe there does need to be more communication about that.
Yeah.
Because I do think that people that have had previous kids go through the district, you really do think, like, you can just say, it's excused. Like, I'm excusing you, then it's excused. It's really not.
Right.
Am I understanding that the truancy thing, that's not going to be a totally surprise to parents either?
It will have been.
Oh, no.
Included in all of those discussions prior to that, so.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it should, should wash through.
Should be a surprise.
Yeah. We're not truant, just so everybody knows. Want to be clear with that.
Thank you.
Great, so we've heard about all of them. We now need to approve them. Entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve the handbooks as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Discussion, discussion, discussion.
Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the handbooks are approved. Thank you to the principals. Next up, consider approval of changes to the 2024/2025 mobile device handbook.
The only change there is a new superintendent of schools, the interim superintendent of schools is listed, but other than that, we did include the handbook just as a reference for you, but there are no changes, so we'd just certainly recommend continuing with the mobile device handbook as presented in your packet.
I move to approve the mobile device.
Yep. With very, very few changes. Yeah. And I would second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
My compliments, Mr. Sorbo, on his brevity.
Yes.
And parents, don't forget to get the maintenance plan.
Yeah.
On your devices. I mean, just saying. Again, speaking from experience.
And students, don't forget to charge your devices.
Any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the changes to the mobile device handbook have been approved. Thank you. Next up, consider a resolution authorizing the interim superintendent to be the identified official with authority, or the Iowa, for St. Peter Public Schools. We just did this last meeting.
Yes, you did.
To identify the previous superintendent.
You've got to redo it, then. You've got to change it around, yeah.
We need to change it around, so, yeah, we just did this last one. I don't know if you have anything you need to say about it.
No, I mean, it's just, it allows access to various secure sites in the MDE, various portals, and you have myself and Kimberly as the backup, if you will, to get that access. And, you know, as reports start needing to be made, and as our staff needs to find information, then we just got to go ahead and grant them access, and if there's a new person, we have to make sure we make those changes as well. Pretty standard, but it's important.
Important. So this change, just changes your name, leaves Kimberly as the second lieutenant.
Yep.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, I move the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion, discussion.
This is a resolution, so we need to go around the table. Ms. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie.
Aye.
Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
You're in for real now. You're the Iowa.
Yeah, this, this makes it real. Yeah. Item number six, consider approval of superintendent evaluation summary. So this is in the packet. This was a result of our, for Superintendent Gronseth. Following procedure, we wanted to get this officially into our minutes and into the official record that we did the evaluation. So we did that, of course, we conducted that earlier this summer. The letter is the summary, so, which reflects the, the items upon which we evaluated Superintendent Gronseth, and then made some notes in there based on our discussion that we had. And then I added the note, of course, that Superintendent Gronseth resigned his position and left on July 31st, so we're approving this beyond his employment, but important to get it into the record as a formal evaluation of our previous superintendent. Would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the superintendent evaluation summary.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to note that we, in that evaluation process, the entire board, on the, on the stated goal evaluation, we all rated him as professional.
In what area?
In, in the areas that we had set as his goals to be reviewed this year.
Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Megan. That concludes the action items for tonight. We now have a few informational items. The first being a first reading of revisions to the policy manual, which are in the packet in front of you. First of which is policy 713, concession stands. This has been a discussion that may have also happened in business meeting, I'm not sure, but certainly in the policy committee, about changing the sort of cut of the net revenue that is split between the district and the booster club to more align with costs and keeping the concession stand going. And also, I don't know if there's anything else on that, but that was the change. Kate, anything else with that one? Okay. And then some updates, policy 406, with public and private personnel data, in terms of what can be shared and what can't. Dr. Olson or Kate, anything to add there?
No, I would just say that those, those changes are also part of that Minnesota School Boards Association recommended changes based on legislative changes from the past session.
So these are for first reading. If you have feedback, or if you have questions, we can certainly answer them now, but if you do have feedback over the next couple of weeks, please let us know. I believe our next meeting is September 11th for the policy committee, and then we will bring for second reading to the September board meeting.
Have the booster club, that conversation has gone well, I...
Yeah, we, in our last policy meeting, we got Mr. Ror Cassi on the line and had a conversation with him about how the conversation has gone, and they have been well aware and are, have been an active part of that conversation. So, yep.
Good.
Yeah, good question. That was our question, too, just to make sure.
Mr. Chair, relative to your, your comment, it's a policy decision, policy committee recommendation, but as you indicated, the business committee also was cognizant of it.
Looked at, yeah. Thank you. All right. Next informational item, building and...
So for them to get a free milk and a cold lunch, they'd have to take the
Free meal.
They'd have to take the whole meal, which they could parse out to their neighbors at no cost to them. But they don't always do that.
Got it.
Can I please, this was reviewed at the business committee, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to approve the adult meal and second entree prices for 2024, 2025 school year.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Megan. That concludes the action items for tonight. We now have a few informational items. The first being a first reading of revisions to the policy manual, which are in the packet in front of you. First of which is Policy 713, concession stands. This has been a discussion that may have also happened in business meeting, I'm not sure, but certainly in the policy committee, about changing the sort of cut of the net revenue that is split between the district and the booster club to more align with costs and keeping the concession stand going. And also, I don't know if there's anything else on that. But that was the change. Kate, anything else with that one? Okay. And then some updates, Policy 406, with public and private personnel data in terms of what can be shared and what can't. Dr. Olson or Kate, anything to add there?
No, I would just say that those changes are also part of that Minnesota School Boards Association recommended changes based on legislative changes from the past session.
So these are for first reading. If you have feedback, or if you have questions, we can certainly answer them now. But if you do have feedback over the next couple of weeks, please let us know. I believe our next meeting is September 11th for the policy committee, and then we will bring for second reading to the September board meeting.
Have the booster club, that conversation has gone well, I
Yeah, we, in our last policy meeting, we got Mr. Ror Cassie on the line and had a conversation with him about how the conversation has gone. And they have been well aware and have been an active part of that conversation. So, yep.
Good.
Yeah, good question. That was our question too, just to make sure.
Mr. Chair, relative to your comment, it's the policy decision, the policy committee recommendation, but as you indicated, the business committee also was cognizant of it.
Looked at it, yeah. Thank you. All right. Next informational item, building and grounds update. Seth is here. Welcome.
Evening, Board, Dr. Olson.
Good evening.
Good evening. So typically, my reports are pretty short and concise. That's just how I do it. So I do want to start with just giving credit to the maintenance crew, custodial crew this year. They really worked hard to create my vision of the schools for cleanliness and just I want it to rejuvenate. They really did a great job this year. You know, they wanted to really create a atmosphere where teachers can come in and take pride in their classroom and be proud to work where they are. So those guys did a fantastic job for that, so just a shout out to those guys. So one of the, just a couple of updates on summer projects. The only real big one we had was tuck pointing at South. That actually went really quick and really easy. There was no surprises or anything to it, stayed right on budget. And it looks absolutely wonderful out there. The whole outside of the building looks about 30 years newer because of it. Walls at MVET. So I've been working with Sarah Croll on that to get that done. We finally do have that slated to get done, but because of the timing it took to get the approval for it, we're going to be waiting for a while for the walls to be manufactured. The contractor that they did, that Sarah did accept to do the project, said he will work afternoons and weekends to get that done sooner than later. One of the other projects out at MVET is the front security door's been busted for a few years. That one did get fixed finally and secured. One of the big things that just came up, this was at the middle school. One of the drains in the turnaround by the principal office entryway, there's a sinkhole that developed right next to the manhole. So I did start working with a, had a construction crew come and take a look at it today. I'm going to try getting one or two more to come out there. That looks like it's going to be a pretty extensive project. And the sooner we get it done, that is actually a safety hazard at this point. So it's just, that's one of the things that just popped up that we'll have to deal with. So that's pretty much it for the updates that I got for what went on this summer. It was just very, very busy time. Any questions from you guys?
Seth, you want to share the, share some information on what we learned
From the Men the Middle project today?
Yep, that's the next one that I have right here. So this morning, Dr. Olson and I, we had a meeting with ICS, just kind of get a feeler where everything is at. After about a half an hour meeting, one of the things that, one of the goals that we wanted was to find out where are we with the budget and the planning. And after, at the end of the project, it came out that right now, we are on budget. For the most part, we are on time, the way everything's looking. It did come up, right now preliminarily, at the beginning, we're looking at maybe a million dollars over, which is very common in the planning phase. Nothing's been set in stone yet. And the upside is there is a contingency that is figured in there. So they were very confident that we're going to be able to do everything as we need to do, stay on budget, stay on time. One of the big ones that I've been pushing for is to make sure the bidding goes out in time to where we have companies have the ability to come in and make quality bids and be able to figure out their timelines and to stay with ours. As of right now, that is the end of November, and everything seems to be right on track with that one. Any questions on that?
We'll continue that message, Seth, that our meeting's on time, on budget.
That's absolutely right. That's how we started the meeting this morning. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Next up, special programs update. Ms. Prackey and Ms. Cora.
Evening. Summer of 2024 is in the rearview mirror as of this morning. And we still, we had some great programming going on this summer. We had our K8 targeted services, Summer Stars program. That was held at North and at the middle school. So North was kindergarten through fourth grade, and then middle school was five to eight. We held that program in July and August, so July 8th through August 1st. It was four hours a day, four days a week for four weeks, so our 16-day program. We had transportation within the city of St. Peter and Cosota for students who needed that. It was very well attended this year. We had 156 students at North Elementary for, in kindergarten through fourth grade, and we had 38 students, which was up slightly from last year, at our middle school program. As you may recall, our targeted service program falls under our ALC, and it's a self-supporting program based on that seat time. We get reimbursed from that. The goal of the program is to prevent that summer learning loss, get kids ready to get back into school again. Teachers do a pre-assessment, a post-assessment, and a continual learning plan for all of the students that attend. So in all K8, we had 194 students attend. And we just want to give a big thank you to the families who arranged their schedules to make sure that their kids could get to the summer program. And of course, the staff who took time out of their summer too, and really are dedicated folks to come in and help us with that. So, and of course, for North Elementary for hosting both our South and North programs. Janet's going to speak a little bit about credit recovery.
I would echo a lot of the things that Ateev said about staff being so dedicated. You know, I'm always so grateful for the staff that come forward and volunteer to come back. Credit recovery is right away in June, so we've got curriculum writing that first week after school is out, and then we jump right into summer school until the end of June. And so I'm just so grateful for the teachers that come back summer after summer to do that. Credit recovery numbers were down this summer, and I think that really has to do with our credit recovery night school program being such a success last school year. We just did not have the same number of referrals. And I think that also speaks to the teaching staff at the high school getting more students successfully through the classes. So it's actually a good thing that we had fewer students needing credit recovery. We did have 43 students that enrolled, and we had 74 course completions. So that means that most students did more than one course. So really good success rate. I just want to thank Emily for providing, Emily Craig for providing food service. Our students really appreciated that breakfast and lunch at the start and end of the day. It does encourage attendance. It's a reason for kids to enroll, especially since we weren't able to do the read and feed this summer. So that was a really great success. So again, just thank you to the students that came and recovered those credits. That's a great thing for them and for the teachers that supported it.
What are you planning, summer 25?
Yes.
I'm going to get tour T-shirts pretty soon.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Always stay up here.
Oh, yes, it's that time.
We are now on to the reports section. The building principles are first.
It's another wave.
Yep.
Ready? Thank you. We had a great district kickoff this morning and the energy, every year, like, I don't know, I've been here 26 years, and every year you can just feel the energy in the air, and so it's really fun. Janet's going to report more on that as our professional development coordinator. As early childhood, we're getting off to a good start. Our class numbers and school readiness are actually quite high this year. So we were able to switch a couple of sections around and get more kids into the programming that they needed, so we're really excited about that. This is our first year, as you recall, last spring, we talked about switching our school readiness transportation to a partnership with Minnesota River Valley Transit. That's not our early childhood special education program. That will continue with Saints busing for the services they can provide. But school readiness is switching to the preschool express buses on the city of St. Peter or Minnesota River Valley Transit. That's a lot MRVT. We'll be providing several buses for us with drivers. Those will be buses that are specific to preschoolers. There won't be no adults besides the driver on those buses, so we're excited about that. With that change, it's brought about just a little bit of kind of trying to figure out how that system's going to work. And I think we're getting there, so we're feeling really positive about that. If this all rolls out the way we hope it does, it'll be a significant savings to the school district and our school readiness program, and a slight savings to parents every month for the fees that they'll be charged. So we're excited about that. We will be ready. Our K-ready program starts the same day as South Elementary, which is August.
28.
28. And then our rest of our programming starts September 3rd, the day after Labor Day. So we're excited to get the kids back. And again, shout out to the staff for putting it all into this week to get ready for those little ones.
All right. I'm excited to do a little recap of the day. We started with Charlie Potts introducing everybody at the Gustavus Breakfast. So that was great, and thanks to all of you that attended. There was a lot of energy that day. Lots of shout outs to Dr. Olson for being back. We're so glad that you're here. And then we went to the high school for a little bit longer message from Dr. Olson, and I provided an update on Read Act training. I think our staff is feeling ready and excited about the training. The conversations that we had were about, like, who gets to do it, which was really kind of cool. So really, really positive response. Tomorrow, Michael Johnson's going to lead us through some AI and education training, just to keep us very current, right? And then they'll have some PLC time and some time in buildings tomorrow. At South Elementary, we are most excited about our entrance conferences with families. Those conferences are K8 on August 26th and 27th, with that first day, the 28th. And the questions that we're fielding in the office are primarily about, like, what is my bus stop? What is my bus time? And if families really want to know that now, please call and ask those questions, but that will also be addressed in those conferences. So it's a great time to ask and get to know teachers and all of that, so very exciting. And then I just want to report our kindergarten and first grade numbers. We have 118 kindergartners, so we're excited about those eager kids to come in. And we're at 145 first graders, so that number just keeps going up. Thank you.
I suppose we could talk to Michael Johnson about, Dr. Olson may be doing a little breakout session on AI with movie trailers.
Yes.
Maybe do a little session on that if there's time, willing. So greetings from North Elementary, where we too are super excited to get students back in the building. Numbers, I just ran the numbers, and it looked like, as compared to last year at this time, we're about 20 students up, about 437 students. So that's really good. That's a good number to be at. And our class sizes kind of fluctuate a little bit. Second grade's about 24 on average, third grade's about that same thing, about 25, and then fourth grade's about 27, right in there. So the numbers are good, we want those, and they're right at what we're ready for. And all these registered students are on Monday and Tuesday of next week, getting ready with their families to meet the homeroom teacher and get the supplies dropped off and get the pictures taken and all those things, so. And that's what our teachers are just getting ready for, right? Janet talked about the Read Act, and there was a lot of excitement at North as well. And it's a course. I mean, it's a heavy workload course, but they're reading strategies that our teachers have been implementing, but then all the other ones that we haven't been thinking of, so that we can reach all the learners and bump up that achievement level in reading the best we can going forward, so. Also, things going on this week at North. We have our annual kindness crew training event that's going to take place tomorrow night on the playground at 4:30. So we believe in, like, highest level of independence possible of our seven through 10-year-olds. We also believe in student leadership. Doesn't matter if they're seven or 10, they can lead other students. And so a number of students, last year, second and third graders, apply to be on the kindness crew. We can't take all of them, they can't draw the number at 40. And then they do a training event tomorrow night, like, little stations around the playground where they train students, like, how do you invite students in on the playground to participate in other games? You know, who do you look for to look like they're not engaged when they have, you know, their free time? And probably one of the best events, I invite all of you to, is that first day when students are rolling into the building, because our kindness crew is like at every doorway cheering with their tie-dyed shirts and kindness crew. And it's cool, it's cool. I mean, staff are out there too, but it's really the kid, the kids leading that stuff is just so powerful. And a shout out to the PBIS team, like, that's something they created, that's not a program. They just made it. They're like, hey, how about we come up with some student leadership, besides student council, which we have too. So that's really exciting, and I'm looking forward to that tomorrow night. Also, tomorrow afternoon, it's a big all-staff meeting in the afternoon. A component of that, that we believe in at North is, like, shared expectations, right? Every adult in, at North needs to have common language as far as expectation goes. And that's a component of PBIS. So our paras come in, our custodians when they have time, obviously our teachers, our office staff, like, they participate in this matrix building, so we know, like, what do we expect out of kids when they're rolling in the building or out at recess or in the lunchroom or using the drinking fountain? What's the verbiage, what's the terminology we're going to use? So we don't confuse kids with the same expectations, but a different rollout on how we administer it. So that's like a common understanding of what we expect, okay? And that's really important to each beginning of school year. And then also, just a shout out to the community in general. You've heard of probably the Friends of Learning program, which is the backpack program. 650 backpacks planning to pack tomorrow. So a number of us are going down to the fairgrounds to help pack those backpacks. But we get a lot of those, we get a lot of those in the school district, and a lot of them are coming to North. So it's definitely such an asset to have that group in our community. Kids don't generally have to worry about not having the supplies that their classmates do. So leveling the playing field. So that's it at North Elementary.
Families, this is the time of the year where we ask folks to fill out free and reduced meal benefit applications. And even though our breakfast, our first breakfast and lunch continues to be at no cost to families, it's really still important for people to fill that up out. It's kept completely confidential, and it does provide data in which the district receives some funding for both for technology and for Title I. In addition to that, Minnesota State High School League determines activity and athletic class placement based on free and reduced lunch percentages. So just giving people the heads up that that's on our school district website. It will also be mailed out to all families. We do encourage that, and that will also be a vehicle for school readiness scholarships and for Student Activity Pass scholarships, if those are completed. So really encouraging that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and an update from the middle school. So earlier this month, August 1st and 2nd, we had our annual Jump Start Program, which is our fifth grade orientation. We had roughly 96 students attend, and that's about 65% of our fifth graders, which is actually down from years previous. So we'll take a look at why that might be. It's a little earlier in the summer than typical. Also, we had new to district orientations. So any student who is brand new to the district, we hold a separate orientation for them. We have a session for fifth and sixth grade and a session for seventh and eighth grade. Ms. Dozy runs that. And at both of those programs, we always tell kids, you know, beginning of the school year, we're just as nervous as you are. And I felt that today at District Workshop. That day, there's so much energy in the air, as these guys have talked about. Buzz at the middle school today, middle school sports started, football players coming in with their brand-new shiny cleats, and volleyball players ready to roll. So it's an exciting time. We look forward to the school year and our message. Tomorrow, at our full staff kind of kickoff at the middle school, we'll be continuing to fine tune, like we mentioned earlier, with the handbook policy. Fine tuning through common expectations, common practices, and response to student data.
I didn't have this on my list to talk about tonight, but since it was in the board book, I want to thank the Good Neighbor Diversity Council for, again, another $2,000 donation for our next Joy Day. They've been a sponsor of that event since our very first one last year with Indigenous Joy Day, and we wouldn't be able to do it without them, so thank you to the Diversity Council. This Wednesday night, the high school is having a ninth grade and new student open house. Starts at 3:30. And just a reminder to families that that will be replacing one of our four parent-teacher conference evenings. That doesn't mean you're not welcome to contact us if you have any issues in between conference time. It is specifically for ninth graders and new students, but anybody is welcome if they want to come in and meet their teachers and have a tour of the building. And that is Wednesday night. I also, we have, we've had a couple of surprises staffing-wise at the end of this summer. And so I just want to say thank you to my teaching staff. They have, they are all super willing and happy to pitch in wherever they're needed, whether that's taking on an overload or helping somebody with a new curriculum. They're fired up about the school year. I'm sure all of you guys could feel that this morning. Really positive energy.
Yeah, I want to follow with what everybody's been talking about. I think it was a fantastic start to our beginning of the school year, and I want to thank the principals and especially Janet in her role of staff development. principals and especially Jana in her role as staff development coordinator for getting all of that workshop information out and planned. We had a great new teacher workshop last week, and opening workshop started this morning, and there was a lot of energy and enthusiasm in the room, and we're really excited about the start of the school year. I did want to share that as, as I think I shared with you at one point in time, I always recommended to new principals and new superintendents that they have a hundred-day transition plan. I had a five-day transition plan. But within that timeframe, I really, from your input, from the meeting that we had initially discussing the potential of me taking over this position and meeting with our administrative team and staff members and teacher leadership, really the commonality was really about five focus areas. The budget, the middle school building project, academic achievement, leadership development, and fifth one, communication, culture, and climate. And really, I shared this morning with our, with our staff, I always have a little sign on a whiteboard in my office and I have it up there, again, culture, each strategy for lunch. So, we are all about positive culture, great communication, and good school climate where every one of our students feels welcome, safe, and excited to learn. So, those are some of the, the focus areas I heard from you. Do you have any questions about those? I can give you more detailed information as we move forward here, but those are kind of the, the big rocks, if you will. All right, that's it for me. One board meeting almost done.
I would add, we've had some good conversations about those kinds of big rocks and how those might turn into some discussions about goals moving forward that we can talk about in September as a board, you know, at a study session and then bring to a board meeting for approval. So, or for information. So, we have some good conversations brewing and we appreciate the, how you've jumped right in with that minimal transition plan being able to be put in place. To note, before we go around the table, we've added the board committee updates here. So, just as a way to kind of, for the sake of transparency and communication, some of the things that your committee might be working on, so whoever wants to give that update can also do that during that committee update as opposed to the individual updates. But we'll go around the table first for any individual board updates.
I just wanted to say I'm excited for the school year to start. Thank you to our principals and our staff and our teachers for all of that and enjoyed myself this morning and feeling all that energy in the room. So, thank you for that. Ken and I attended an MSBA conference, goodness, was that two, two weeks ago now? Two weeks ago, which was great. A lot of talk about strategic planning and goals and, you know, just mission and very fitting for everything that we're going to be going through this next year, next following year. So, I really appreciated being able to attend that conference. I thought that was great. So, thank you.
It was excellent. You're absolutely right. One of the, the words that, that keynote speaker presented was every child, and hence every person is brilliant in their own way. You know, there are lots of ways to define that, and this gentleman was, was considered really learning disabled and has a PhD at this point. So, you know, obviously has done very well and is a good example of that. Do you want a committee report now or should we come back to that?
We'll come around to committee reports.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess one, one thing I'd like to mention is, is earlier when we were talking about the speed feedback on Gray Street, I was remiss. The city has very graciously agreed to install that as part of their, their contribution. So, again, our appreciation to, to the city. And then the other thing, my apologies in advance by thirty days, but our older son is getting married the day after our board meeting next month, so I'm a little tied up the night before. My apologies, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm just looking forward to another school year. I'm excited for a full school year with Dr. Olson and kind of the fun we're going to have together and some school stud board sessions and, I don't know, I'm just excited for another school year, I guess. That's all I got.
Awesome, thank you. I would echo that. Great, thank you to those who coordinated this morning. Jana, I know everything was lovely, the food was great, the energy was high, it was awesome. I talked to a student teacher who is a Gestavis student later in the day, and I said, how did your day go? And he said, it was awesome. And he's not someone I would pick who would say, a day of learning in that kind of environment was awesome, but he loved it. So, you even have the student teachers hooked, which was great. So, thanks for, that was a great kickoff this morning.
Yeah, now all the work starts, right? Everyone has a lot of work to do. Students have work to do, the teachers are working hard, the admins working hard. We have a lot of work to do this year to correct some things that, well, our budget and other issues, and I'm looking forward to that. I feel like we're in a really good place to handle that. So, I'm thankful for all that and thank you for all the support from the admin team and the teachers, and it's been an emotional year for a lot of folks, a lot of us, and thank you for hanging in there. Kate?
I grew up in education, and this is my favorite week in the universe because you can just feel the buildings pulsing, you know, bring them on and the teachers are all ready to roll. This is just absolutely the best. Thank you, guys.
All right, committee updates. Education committee, would anyone like to update on what's going on there?
I was thinking about the education committee, and all I could think about was the handbooks. But we, someone, I'm looking at you two, what else did we talk about at education other than the handbooks? That was just a large quantity of what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was there something else, guys?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's a big.
That was it.
It's a big annual lift.
And you all heard that, so.
Yes, great.
Check, check.
Awesome. Business committee.
Yeah, several things. First, if I may.
I meant to mention it earlier when we, around the table, but my compliments to all the, the administration and what an articulate, pleasant group of the, had the breakfast this morning. You know, I was really impressed. No wonder we have such a good system. You guys are obviously very, very capable, highly skilled, so thank you. Business committee, we met on the fourteenth of August. Some good news, some of the, that's been alluded to already with the principals. Enrollment is actually looking better, and that's really encouraging. One, one class level isn't quite where we'd like to see it yet, and overall, obviously we, everybody is welcome. We certainly like to have more of it, but that's, it's more positive than we had anticipated. Also, open enrollment, we're doing well with that, which is good. Next bit of good news is we're under budget, which, and again, there's between the first of July and by the time everything gets finalized sometime in September, there's some things that are moving parts, but at this point, it looks to be, will be under budget by a fairly significant amount. Another bit of good news is the, the bonds were let and the, Megan was pretty impressed with the checking account balance for a few days there. The, the arbitrage on that, we should receive somewhere around two-point-six million dollars just with investing the proceeds of the bonds until they're drawn for the construction purposes. And that's all perfectly legal, and please recognize, not all of that can be retained by us. Some has to be, to be repaid to, to the government. But again, that's, that's certainly something that's, that's very encouraging. The, like I mentioned earlier, we'll hopefully have a more detailed report relative to the budget in, in September, and Megan and the business officer are right atop of that along with Dr. Olson.
Great. Thank you. Policy committee.
Okay, so we, you, as you can see, a lot of our work is being just updating according to MSBA and state statute and so on, and the first reading, accepting on one reading is going to continue. We worked a little bit on trying to make sure that we have a, a schedule so when, we know when each policy needs to be reviewed, if it's an annual one, and when we did it last and cleaning it all up that way. And we also did a bit of discussion, and Dr. Graff has, the safety committee, we're looking at, at the crisis management policy eight oh six, and that requires a lot of work. There's a lot of statute in that, and that committee is meeting and going to advise the policy committee meeting, and will meet on September eleventh, and stay tuned because there'll be, it'll be coming before you soon.
Thank you, Kate. All right, thank you. Oh, yeah, Tracy.
I do have an update from MVET as well. Well, it's not a big update, but it was talking a little bit about the walls that they're fixing down there too, and hopefully Dr. Olson can kind of fill in that a little too because, you know, that's our building. We're fixing the walls, but I'm not even going to try to, I mean, we're fixing the walls, MVET's going to pay for it, but really, we're going to be paying for it, half of it because we own half of it. Can you like talk about that a little bit and how that all works? Because it is kind of a big deal because the building is kind of a mess down there.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the way the MVET, I mean, St. Peter School District owns the MVET building.
And so, as the owner of that building and the primary tenant, obviously, we have the responsibility for upkeep, maintenance, repair of the building. Now, the exception to that would be if there are things that occur as a result of our tenant use, in this case, our student programs there, then the MVET budget helps to repair those particular costs. But Seth and his crew are working really hard on, on making some repairs to the buildings, to the, to the walls in the buildings, et cetera. We, we lease the building to MVET. Other MVET school districts that are part of that organization lease levy for those rent costs, if you will, that we get. You're not allowed to lease levy for those rent costs because we're the owner of the building. So, stay tuned, there may be some other changes that will be occurring there, but we work hard to make sure that we recoup those costs when appropriate from MVET.
And then the other big thing at the education committee, and when I looked at Jana, I realized what it was, was the Read Act. And, and I don't know if anybody was there for the ten o'clock bit, but it, hopefully we'll talk about that at a study session because I thought the amount of work that's gone into that, and it's kind of interesting, all of the training that the teachers are going to have done, I certainly would not be able to summarize what Jana did, but I know there's a lot of teachers doing a lot of things, and there's been a lot of organizations surrounding it, and we're doing what we need to do. How does that sound?
Yes, so Jana, just, it's, the teachers that are involved in our two cohorts are required to take approximately fifty hours of training. About thirty hours of that training will occur within contractual time, staff development days, early releases, et cetera, and twenty hours will occur outside of contractual time. So, there's a lot there.
That's a great summary. So, Dr. Olson's brain works a lot better than mine does after seven o'clock and probably pretty much after every, every o'clock, so.
All right. We have the upcoming meetings of the committees listed here, also on the St. Peter Schools' website, on the district calendar. And then our next regular board meeting is Monday, September sixteenth at six-thirty PM, right back here in the governor's room. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tracy.